I got six o'clock. You're good? Okay. Let's get started. Good evening. Welcome to the special city council meeting. Today is Monday, February 8th, 2020, 2021. Carter. You will please stand for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We gotta make sure we get 2020 off all these documents. All right, we have a special council meeting tonight. And we'll start off with public comments. First is Liz Duda. Duda, duda. Never heard that one before, have you? State your name and your address, please, ma'am, and then you have three minutes.
Thank you. So Liz Duda, 1081 Palmyra Drive.
Is that on?
Yes.
Okay.
Liz Duda, 1081 Palmyra Drive. First of all, I would like to thank Alicia Dash and Heather Overman for your work in putting together the draft work plan. And I'm grateful to city council for focusing on it, for bringing it to the community, letting us have public input. I think what you're doing is very important. So appreciate the hard work that you have put into it. I would like to comment on three areas. The first one that I particularly appreciate is the bike ped connectivity one. So you may know I'm the co-chair of the Bike Ped Coalition of York County along with Ben Allman. So we think that this work is very important. You may also know that I help, I organize the Tiki K Elementary School Bike and Walk to School Days. So I recognize how important it is to, for people to be able to walk and bike to schools and to parks and to, to, to commercial areas in the community. So I think bike ped connectivity is extremely important. I heard one story that I wanted to share with you guys recently of a family told me the first time that they came into the city of Tiki K was a bike and walk to school day. And they thought, look at all these kids biking and walking to school. This is the special community where we think we should be living. So it draws people here. It makes it a nice place to live. So I'm glad that you're working on bike ped connectivity. Excuse me. The second area that I'm glad that you're looking at is updating the procurement plan or policy. So as you know, a city of the size of Tiki K, I've said this in past meetings, needs policies and procedures that are appropriate and are followed. So I think updating this one will help alleviate future concerns. So I'm glad that this is part of your work plan. The third one that I'm interested in, and the group is here today, is the skate plan. So thank you to Mayor O'Neil for looking at this, for considering it. So I think I've been working with Modis Linskus and other community members to, to, to add, to think about a concept that would be right for the city of Tiki K. We think that we've come up with a great one, which is an inclusive community park where even skaters are welcome. So we want a community park that is skatable, where all people would be welcome, including skaters. So one thing that we're gonna tell you about is it's also got a public art component, which is another part of your work plan today. And so we, we, we're glad that you're looking at this. We appreciate the opportunity to speak here to you today. And Modis is gonna talk next.
Okay, Modis is next. Modis, state your name and address, please.
Hello. Hello. My name is Modis Linskus. I'm 16 years old and I live at 1138 Dove Trace. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for taking the time to meet with me today, hear me out, and for helping me get to this point, presenting to you. I presented my idea to have a skatable park built in Tiki K about six months ago, stressing the fact that skaters, scooter riders, BMX riders don't really have a place to go in Tiki K. Since I presented my idea, I've seen more and more skaters skating in the streets of Tiki K. Just, and I think that they should have a designated area to go and skate and like, not in public parking lots and spaces. A lot of people show like a negative attitude towards us when they see us skating in public spaces because they believe our sport is disruptive and detrimental to the community. However, like many shows, many studies show that skateboarding is extremely beneficial to the physical and mental health of kids who are not interested in the traditional like team sports of today, like basketball and football. Skating allows for these kids to go out, meet new groups of people, form new group of friends while progressing and honing their skate skills. And also allows for them to improve their physical health by getting out. You know, the numerous hours of pushing and jumping and the constant motion of like a day of skating could be compared to a, you know, traditional athletic practice. So I think the inclusion of a skatable park in Tiki K would be great. It would, it would not only create a place for skaters to go, it would also create a place for all ages, ethnicities, genders, and sports to come and practice their creativity and their sport. You know, in recent years, skating has become one of the most popular sports in the United States, following only basketball and football. And although it's so popular, Tiki K doesn't have that many opportunities for us. While like older people and younger kids have recreational opportunities like virtually everywhere. So, you know, I think the inclusion of something like that would be great in our community. Like not only for skaters, but it also encompasses the community, allows for other people to walk through and see what we're all about, not just like causing harm to the community.
All right. Thank you very much. Matt? You're next. Please state your name and your address, please. Matt Omen?
My name is Matthew Omen. I reside at 9118 Windjammer Drive. Could I have a moment to set up my? Talk while I'm working here. So I am a residential landscape designer and I also teach landscape design at Central Piedmont Community College. I've done so for the past two years now and, and have been a designer for the past five. Modis's story really inspired me. I, I, I was a teen growing up that, that really enjoyed the concept of skating. I was never any good at it. But it, it, it provided a great outlet for me. And so I've, I've volunteered my time to help Modis sort of procure and refine his idea of what a skate park in Tiki K could look like. So as you may know, we are interested in the park district of Windhaven, the new subdivision going in over by the water tower. So. My apologies to those of you in the back. I'll, I'll turn this around later. In the packets that you may have in front of you, there's a lot, a lot of more detailed information. But our proposal is for a, an all-inclusive skatable park in the Parks District of Windhaven. In the, the 20 acres that is reserved for the Parks District, we would like to create a multi-use inclusive space that is connected with wide asphalt trails that are ridable and usable by all non-motorized vehicles. The, the section of Windhaven of the Parks District that we picked out is more towards the end, off to the secluded edge. So if, if you would like to experience the, the skatable area, you're more than welcome to. If not, you are still welcome to maneuver around it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll ask again because my mic wasn't on. Is the park designed that you've come up with, which is, it's cool, thank you for doing that and volunteering your time, is that the full 20 acres or is that just a portion?
Thank you for asking. So the, the portion that's displayed here on the. The, the upper portion here is the full 20 acres of the Parks District. In order to properly design the skatable space, we needed to first understand what the rest of the park area was going to look like. And up to this point, I have not seen a, a, a concept or any sort of design for the full space. So I, I went ahead and just threw some, some, some pathways on there to, to give us a bit of a skeleton to work off of. And as you can see, we are behind the. We're just past the power line easement and there's a large level area right before gray drops off. That's roughly 300 feet diameter, about, about the size of a football field. That is off to the, to the right that, so it's not dead, front, dead and center. You can still. You can still get those really nice long view sheds all the way down to the end, end of the property. That's over, over a 1,500 foot view. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, you're up next.
Hi. Ben Allman, 7308 Cascading Pines Drive.
Nice stash, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. At least this is its first public appearance. The mustache might need its own three minutes. As you know, I'm a co-chair of the Bike Ped Coalition with Liz and I'm, I've been a big proponent of advocating mountain bikeable trails around the city and definitely love to see the connectivity through the Windhaven development, you know, connecting to, to the peninsula, to the area where the park is. And I think this is a possible great location for, for a skatable park like, like they're proposing. We think, you know, talking a lot about satisfying different user groups and trying to find activities for teens to do and, and typically, you know, if you propose something fun to do to a teen, you'll get rolled eyes in response. But, you know, it's rare that kids will come and articulate what they're looking for. And I think these kids have done a great job in rallying support and developing their, their idea, being open to, to input and, and change. Looking at designs that would, that would help separate different areas so that multiple different types of users could exist in the space safely and not, you know, minimize fear of, of collisions and. Okay, hold on. So when I was growing up, I was always a fan of skateboarding, was not very good at it. Took up BMXing instead, but found myself among the same kind of company. Always wished we had a skate park, but never did. I found out, I think they got some skate parks and after I was away at college. But we had public art that we rode, you know, shopping center, a bunch of old cars that were covered in asphalt and ended up being some very cool obstacles to ride all over. But so as I ended up, you know, BMX racing, traveling around the world, going to different cities, riding with other riders, seeing what they have, riding their city streets, riding their parks. And, you know, the competition wasn't as much a draw to me as just the community and the creativity of the sport. You know, gave up competition for just riding, doing jumps, getting creative. And like we found when we were, when we were young, if your city doesn't have a skate park, your city becomes a skate park and we just ride all over. But I, I think, like Mayor recently signed on to a complete streets plan where we look at all users of, of a street and consider, you know, lots of things when we're building new infrastructure. I kind of like the idea of a complete parks plan where we think about all potential users when making park decisions and think about adding skatable things when, maybe when, whenever we build a park, there could be a network of, of elements that draw people to participate in that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody have any comments? Okay, I'll have some comments then. So we, we made a lot of assumptions here. The, the cost of the, of this project, pretty large, three, did I read 350, something like that? 350,000? There's always a struggle to, to finance things. I know you said, you mentioned the $400,000 from the, from Windhaven. That's kind of already decided to go to Catawba Park? Yeah, so there's not $400,000 just available to, to build a park like that right off the top of our head. Then, five years ago, when this whole thing started, we were talking about putting baseball parks or something like that, then I think it's kind of morphed to put the baseball parks on the other side. Maybe two years ago, we started, the pickleball people started saying they were gonna put their pickleball courts there. So now we've got the pickleball people and the skateboard people all kind of looking at the same piece of property. And neither one of us have any money to, to kind of find that, fund that until Catawba Park gets, gets built, so. And then you gotta figure does, is Windhaven people okay with having a skate park there? So there's kind of a three assumptions we have to, we have to come up with as a, as a council with your input. Obviously, you all want a skate park there. I'm gonna assume that the pickleball people don't. And I'm gonna assume that there's gonna be differing opinions from the people who are moving into Windhaven. So that's the kind of stuff we have to work through. Did you have any comments on that?
So one part, the financing, yes, so we are aware that the Windhaven developer had allocated $400,000 because they weren't putting a piece of a certain amenity into their property. So I expect that they expect that it's going into.
I'm sorry, speak up.
The Windhaven developer allocated $400,000 because they were not putting in an amenity. So I think that they think it's going to the, the park development, so. But we would help try to find other financing. So for example, there's a public art component. We are looking into a public art grant at this time. You said that you didn't think that the pickleball people would necessarily want skaters here. We think that the, the fact that it's designed as an inclusive park where everybody is welcome wouldn't mean, would mean that they would welcome skaters. They would welcome all different types of people, all different activities. We don't think that they wouldn't want skaters there. So the concept is to make it enjoyable for everybody. It's not, it's not a skate park with a negative connotation. It's an inclusive park where everybody is welcome.
That's not what I meant. I think, I think I meant that they, the pickleball people think that that's where their pickleball courts are gonna go. Obviously, you can't play pickleball on skateboard area and you can't skateboard on a pickleball court.
Yes.
So.
So it's a, it's a large.
It'd have to be 50/50 or 25/75 or what, I don't know. But we haven't, we haven't, we have not even come close to that part yet because we weren't thinking about doing anything with that until after Catawba Park.
Yes.
So it's not something we have to decide right away.
Right, and they can all fit there.
That'll be something that the next council could probably decide.
Yeah, so I think they can all fit there and the design will allow pickleball.
I think I just saw when he said that takes up all 20 acres.
Most of the drawing is grass. The skate park was like.
Okay. Well, we could go to that later. I, I understand. Okay.
So it's less than an acre.
But we saw that parking there and other things, so that's just something to consider. And it's a very robust big park. I like the idea. I'm, I'm, really, I'm for a skate park. But it's always about the money. And, and I think the idea is you guys can have fundraises of some kind. You know, we had fundraising for the All Play Together. That was a big, big project. And we raised money for that, so I'm sure you can come up with something.
And we formed two advisory boards. Some includes All Play Together people. It includes pickleball people, so we believe that we have an inclusive board too.
There you go. Okay. Any other comments or questions before we move on? Okay, hearing none. Let's start our council workshop. A Catawba Park. Charlie, is that you?
It's good. Joey and I are gonna tag team it. I'm gonna let him start first. Mayor and councilors, I have, and Joey and Bob Barkin have been able to meet with each of y'all individually and have some conversations. All of our prior conversations, things we've shown at council meetings were all about phase one. Joey, I'll click through this, but now we're talking about phases one and two. So Joey's just gonna catch, spend a couple minutes just catching us up to speed on what, what all that would entail. And then I'll take it back over and we'll start talking about some of the, the financial opportunities. So Joey, I'll let you guide us a little bit.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me here. Seems like every time I meet with you to talk about Catawba Park, it keeps escalating, which is a great thing. So I'm gonna run through the first slides, obviously Catawba Park and its, as what we envision as the phase one and two combined portions. And we have a much larger view right now, but we'll go through the slides and talk about each one of those individual components. The first one that you have there is the baseball softball complex that features one 300-foot field. And then that's, that's envisioned for men's softball league, our older baseball league that we hope to start up that hits the teenage age group that we simply can't offer right now because of field space. Three 225-foot fields that really encompasses the meat of our softball and baseball programs. That's where a large chunk of the age groups would participate. That would also be a great area for tournaments as well because those are typically some of your highest used field sizes. And then tucked in in the corner there is a 106-foot field that we envision for our tiny Ts and our advanced T-ball. As we designed this park, one of the most important aspects that we wanted to have is, one, open it up for everyone to use, but specifically for our programming, make sure that we can get every single one of the age groups out there to utilize the facility. So that is our baseball softball complex.
I'm sorry, if you'll go back for a second. There's, looks like there's some buildings. There's a building in the middle. And then there's some little, there's eight little buildings, it looks like, to the entrance of each field.
So those are all dugouts, the smaller fields. And then there will be a concession stand in the middle. That's strictly food, restrooms, a slight bit of storage. It'll be a single-story building as well. All right, next, next phase, you have the, the main entrance. And then to the left of the main entrance, you'll see the maintenance building. It's relatively close to the center of the park. And then the, the big feature in this area is the open play meadow where, and the amphitheater, just to confirm, will not be part of this. If someone wants to make it their amphitheater, we'd gladly accept the check. The open play meadow is where we, and restrooms in that area as well, but the open play meadow is where we envision the future home for all of our community events. Really being able to expand upon the current offerings we have to, one, you know, re-envision some of the existing events that we have. And then, two, potentially adding events as well that we simply can't do because of facility limitations. You also see a large 153 parking space facility. And then if you follow that parking all the way up through the loop, that's a single exit point that allows us to do some on-street parking as well. Parking, something that's very valuable in Tiki K and very rare. This is the main chunk of the parking lot for not only the open play meadow, the soccer multipurpose complex and the baseball facility. In totality, it's about 450 through this first phase. Along with this other portion, you'll see the, the light brownish, tannish color. That's where the playground will go. And that's the over, overhead view of the playground area. Given all the work that we did with Trailhead Park turning into an inclusive playground, we thought it was very important to turn that, this facility into a inclusive playground as well. Heading into the next slide, that's, that's the play design that we have. Obviously, you'll have the rubberized surfacing with it. One of the things that Charlie and I really enjoyed about this piece is kind of the earth tones. It kind of fits into the natural wood surroundings. We're kind of envisioning a rubbery surface of green with potentially like a river channel going through the surfacing, just really kind of hitting all the points of what we envisioned Catawba Park being. Our, our addition to, to this phase, this was phase two, the soccer multipurpose complex. When you first saw this, it was three full-size soccer fields with lines for small-sided play on every aspect of the soccer field. We felt like as important as we continued designing, as I spoke on earlier, making sure that this was an opportunity for all of our sports and all of our age groups to get out there. So you'll, the, the third field closest to the parking lot, you'll notice is basically a blank canvas. What we envisioned being able to do with that facility or that field is to have our younger kids' sports out there such as U5, U7 soccer. And also gives us opportunity to strike flag football fields out there. There are field turf paint that goes for the turf that we can utilize and then be able to scrub off. Just gives us a lot more flexibility to utilize that space as efficiently as possible and really maximize its usage. One note on that design, you'll see that concession stand area in the, in the small playground in that one. That area is actually gonna be pushed back further down because it's, the way it was originally drawn out is part on the Duke Energy Land. So that's gonna get completely shifted to the Clear Springs property. And it's basically gonna be the same design as the concession stand at the baseball softball complex to help minimize those expenses on architecture and on design. This is a tentative estimated completion date on, you know, what's coming down the pipe. So first off, we already have the design bids for phase one. As you can see, it's a very elaborate piece of documentation. It could be used as a blunt force object weapon to the head. But I think when looking at this, you can say that no corners were cut by Campco putting this together. So we have this right now. With council's blessing, if we do proceed forward on agreeing to fund phase one and phase two at this time, we will start putting that out. We will put it out for bid on February 15th. And then go through the process of meeting with prospective contractors at the pre-bid conference. And then we'll get another one of these on March 18th. That would be attached as an addendum to phase one and phase two as part of those construction documents. We would, during this process, we've already started working on permitting through, obviously, stuff with the city. We've been working with Duke Energy on the permitting aspect of it. As y'all recall, it's kind of a tedious process, but hopefully with the overall scope of the project completed, we were able to get really fast movement on the parking lot that was just completed at the River Access, so hopefully we'll be able to expedite that quickly as well. Throughout that entire process, we received bids back on April, April 15th. Campco does their things with the bid tabulation, certifying the bids. And then hopefully, council meets May 10th to accept a bid. And then the following regular council meeting on May 17th, second read. And then we are hopefully digging shovel, taking some gold shovels and digging some dirt at the beginning of June.
So Mayor and council, if you'll bear with me one second, let me switch screens here. To talk through, and again, we, we've had some individual conversations. So prior models, we've shown a, a phase one in this column and a phase two expense in, in the other column. Can y'all, Tim? We lost something, bud. What happened? Tim?
He's eating pizza.
Not sure why we lost the screens. This doesn't work if they can't see. Bear with us one second, council. We seem to be having a technical problem. I'm still plugged in. All I did was change screens. You're going to unplug it and plug it back in method?
Thanks for coming, Joyce.
There we go. Okay. So apparently the unplug it and plug it back in method for IT does work. So council, I'll start back over. So the original models that, that you've seen previously had phase one in the left column up here at the top and phase two funding over here. We circle back around with first try on. And basically put the lump sum funding 11.5. And on this side, keeping in mind you've got a cash, cash balance as of 9:30 2020 of $2.342 million.
So we put the borrowing at approximately 9.1 million. So originally this was a 10-year term. It does not work at 10. It doesn't work much better at 15. So looking at it as a 20-year, and I'll talk about the interest rate here and just towards the tail end of this, I'll circle back around. But it puts it at 2.75%. And then it's level debt service funding, that's what the level DS stands for. And you can see that in column L here at 601,360 going down through. So that, that's your, your, the proposed debt. Now, what do we have the debt capacity for to be able to do this? So the big column, most important column here is column W out here at the end. We don't want to see anything in this column red. So you can see we've got three deficit years kind of here just before the midway point. And then three, three deficit years here. But the key is the balance, the ending balance going forward. Yeah, we're still able to carry through to where your leanest year, at least under this scenario, was 157,928. And then it begins to climb. So how did we get there? We used, figured on $10,000 a year from T G K forever. Whether that be through the, the Taste of York County, sponsorships, naming rights, that kind of thing. By brick program, those types of things. So we feel like that one's pretty modest through here, but we wanted to figure on the revenues on, on a somewhat conservative basis. And I'll, I'll have Bob Barkin come up to the microphone to, to talk about some of these. The partial wreck impact fees that you can see here. It's pretty much a finite number based on number of houses left, already, already approved, but not yet permitted. You know, still outstanding. So at the end of your, of our 930, 2020 budget, you had 921,185 as of September 30th. The 518040 represents 120 impact fees on each one of those years. For reference, in 2021, we already have 122 impact fees as of today. So once you get down to these last three years of 2025, 26 and 27, that's contemplating 80 impact fees for those years. The only housing units not in, not calculated or, or put into this, this projection are the proposed multifamilies, 267 multifamily units at game off. Game on, as, as EDC likes to call it. So we don't have those units in there as that developer comes, comes to fruition. Where, yeah, depending on what that is, obviously we'll be able to plug some numbers in, some additional numbers potentially in there.
Okay, by my sketchy math here, it looks like impact fees are going to pay 40% of the cost of phase one and two.
You're at 3.25 million, 701. Yes, sir. There's your total down there at the bottom. So impact fees are going to pay a lot.
Go back up, so we got 921.
Yeah, the, the, the 3.25 does not include the 921.
So there's four, yeah, so that's about 40%. Very good.
Thank you, sir. Your H tax, going through here, we were contemplating beginning this year at 40,000 a year until you get to, through 2025. 2025, we make our final payment on the Runney Park lights of 24,617. So that would carry forward bumping that number to the 64,617. The beginning balance of the 110, so you ended the fiscal year at approximately 130,000. I think it was 131 and change, correct Bob? As council has already appropriated 20,000 from H tax to go towards the completion of additional pickleball courts. That's why we're showing this as a 110 number instead of the, the 131 that was, that was at your year end. So 40,000 a year coming through here. We anticipate this year, based on where the things are going, probably be close to 295, 300 H tax. On a budget of 278. Things are performing very, very well. You know, through the, through the first quarter of, of the fiscal year. So that's the H tax side of things. Here's, here's Windhaven, the Windhaven fees here. No rhyme or reason to how these are spread out, to be quite honest with you. But that is a finite number based on number of homes coming in at Windhaven times the 1500 per household that doesn't get paid until at their final plat of each phase. And, yeah, council, we can, we can run through scenarios that, you know, change this, use portions of it. You know, whatever, whatever y'all want to talk about here tonight, we could definitely have those conversations. The general fund contribution. We've got that shown at 50,000 a year for the, starting this year and going through three more years. And then just bumping it up to 100,000, really just use this as a balancing number to make, to get column F comfortable is, is really where those numbers came from. The key is going to be this, the year 2030 before the, the 2013 golf course in Glenon Center Bond until it comes off the books. Making sure that we've got, we're in good shape going into 2030. You know, so that you don't have to have a, we don't, we don't want to end up in the negative through theirs and having ourselves somewhat of a cushion. So that takes me to your retired bond debt funds. So next fiscal year, we, we have a bond payment, a final bond payment of 51,500, which I believe is Beach and Swim Center and land, the land next to it, correct Bob? So that payment at 5150, or 500 comes off and we're showing that in 2023. That continues on until you get to 2028 and then the current, the city hall property bond is retired. We take what that final payment was in 2027, add it to the 51,500, gives you the 123,628. Got that for a few years. And then we've get the, the big jump in 2031. That's when the big bond, the 2013 bond is 100% retired. That comes off the final payment in 2030. And then that, we just applied that. Then the following year is the fire department bond. The only bond retirement we did not show in here is on the police department. And I believe that final payment is in 2034. And that's about a million dollar payment, that final payment there. So just based on the way the debt was wrapped.
Well, why wouldn't you add that on? Why wouldn't you add that on?
Because it's not needed based on, based on what our column W is over here. That's why we just weren't showing it here. We'd already stopped doing the general fund contribution, you know, years earlier. So it just, it just wasn't needed to show that as far as this exercise goes.
So the, the W really is at a million dollars that after, what, 34?
Yes, sir, in 2035, so right here. I mean, yeah, it would be 1.850. Yeah, so I mean, as we get down to, to these later years and looking at what, what the tax base has done, where we're at business license wise, where, where we're at hospitality tax wise, probably gives us the opportunity to start looking at other things. Whether it's, you know, let's go ahead and finish out the rest of the park if we hadn't already done it at that point in time. What other capital projects are out there? I mean, granted, now, please don't take that as I'm sitting here telling you, you need to wait until 2034 to do anything else. But there are those revenues coming in based on conversation we've had with Rock Hill P R T. You know, and what they've experienced out of Cherry Park and then separately out of Manchester Park. Your, your H tax monies are going to go, you know, are going to climb significantly.
And this obviously hasn't, doesn't take into account what's, what's going to be in game off.
Correct, exactly. So these types of facilities at its size and scope attract commercial. Yeah, attracts that food and beverage. Yeah, Dave La Boulevard was a road that, I mean, I, I grew up in Rock Hill and you just didn't travel it. Yeah, until, yeah, even when the Galleria Mall was out there. But as Manchester came and the Target and the, and the movie theater and the shops and things like that, it became a destination point. You know, so we, we imagine a lot of that is, yeah, it's, this is going to help Windhaven commercials, should help the game, the game off, game on, whatever we want to call it, commercial. So we're not looking at, you know, as you look at the column H, the H tax figures. You know, we're not showing any astronomical increases. You know, I think what we're trying to demonstrate here is if council wants to do this, we, we can absolutely do it. We can follow the schedule that we got from the engineers that Joey just shared with you. The appropriations, yeah, really just come on, on an annual budget basis. Here's what the payment is, here's the available, the available revenues that could go towards that. Obviously, we start with impact fees first, we start with T G K forever, we start with H tax. And then, okay, where are the shortfalls? Does it come from Windhaven? Does it come from general fund contribution? Yeah, that type thing. And those, those kind of conversations could be had, yeah, and should be had every single year. Yes, sir.
You are including River Falls in the impact fee?
Yes, sir.
You're including all known housing?
All, all known with the exception of the multifamily in game on.
Yes, sir.
And Susan, I worked with Susan and Tom to get a calculation on where were we at as far as permits, homes at the end of the fiscal year and calculating forward. So that way we had a, we had a pretty accurate, we had, we had an accurate figure. Again, the, the impact fees, you know, kind of like what I said with the, with the, with the fees from Windhaven. You know, we're already at, at 122. So this 518040 that I'm showing in that first line is already light. Yeah, I mean, and we're February 8th. Yeah, it could be 150 that year. So we could see more of the impact fees up on the front end. Then on the, yeah, they may not stretch out to 2027, but it, because it's a finite number. Now, if other housing projects, you know, come available, council decides to take those on, that adds, that adds to, to your impact fees there as well. So that is, that is the Catawba Park funding conversation. I'll be glad to answer any and all questions, really just kind of looking for some direction from council tonight. You know, do we, do we contemplate? You don't have to make a decision on the Windhaven fees tonight, okay? Yeah, really what, what we're looking for is direction. Yeah, and, and just to, just to correct something Joey said, they're already working on what has to go into that manual. It'll be ready to publish next week, put out for bid on, on, on Monday of next week. The addendum will actually just be the construction plans of phase two. They'll, they've already got construction plans for the phase one portion, open play meadow, the parking, the maintenance area, the baseball fields, that's ready. So if the decision is no, don't do the phase two, roll this thing back, just do phase one, that can be, that can be done by Wednesday, out for bid, ready to roll.
I mean, when I look at it, I, I want this park built. I mean, if, if we build it, they will come. And I think the, the corporate, you know, sponsorships and things are going to come once, once things start going. And I, I also believe, you know, especially with the, the ball fields and the tournaments that'll be coming, that's going to bring additional H tax revenues, I point at the H tax column. But it's also going to bring additional development. And others look good. My, my concern, River Falls concerns me a little bit. I realize it's just sold and I don't think that person would have bought it to not build. But it's been sold two times before, is that right? And nobody's built anything. And the other is, I mean, as we pay off debt, we immediately take that payment and roll it into this one in the later years of this. And it's almost, I mean, as long as all the other things happen, so we have other sources of revenue for the city, we're good. If for some reason they don't happen, I mean, here it is, we, you know, if I pay off a car, I don't immediately take that car payment and throw it back to more debt. Well, actually I do every time, but I shouldn't. And it's not my money, it's the city's money and that's what we were elected to do. So I, I do have a, a slight concern with that.
Very, very valid point. And I mean, to be honest, what, what we wanted to do was, was look at this as a, if we're not going after any what-if monies, you know, the naming rights and things like that, can we do this worst case scenario? And I think we've, we've demonstrated through this, we can. Now, I, I, I mentioned the, the interest rate previously. So I'll throw a little monkey wrench at you. Based on some of the banks that First Tryon has talked to as we're preparing. I want you to watch your screen here. If we were to close on the debt by the end of March, that's the interest rate you could be looking at right now, 2.25%.
We're never going to see 2.25 again.
When you do that, you're looking at a little over half a million dollars in interest that you would save. Now, that would mean taking out the bond, closing on the, closing on that prior to getting the bids in, which we've never done before, okay? I have no idea what the interest rates are going to be like in, in May, which is when y'all would, when we would have the, the bond ordinance in front of you. No clue. That's why, to be safe, we've been using the 2.75 number, okay?
So just to be clear, that really is the worst case scenarios which you're presenting here.
We, now, yeah, when, when we get to May, depending on what the markets are looking like, we could be at a 2.5, 2.6, which obviously is better. You know, we, First Tryon, Amy Ventner, whom y'all have met, she said, Charlie, for what you're talking about and for purposes of this, I would use 2.75. When you're talking about a, a May borrowing, she can't tell me that it would, it will be 2.75. She doesn't think it will be more than 2, 2.75. Yeah, if it gets to three, it gets a little tight, but okay, yeah, the, the model still works.
What we're talking about is March 2.25 versus May 2.75.
Correct.
And $500,000 in savings.
Yes, and interest. So now, I've got a, I've got a lunch meeting with, with the city's bond attorney later this week, Bob and I do, I think on the 10th. I mean, I, I can tell him to get, get moving on it if this is something council wants to do. Because I mean, he'll have to start cranking on it to get, to get it ready to get, get it here for your, for your March meeting. First Tryon will have to get busy putting this in, in front of banks. But they, they've already talked to three banks that said that they would probably bid on this thing at the 20-year. At 20 years, several other banks just dropped. One in particular that we have, I'm not going to say which one at this point, but we've done a lot of financial work with this particular bank would be south of 2.5 if the deal were done now. So again, city's never done it this way before, but you, you definitely have an opportunity to grab some very attractive interest rates at this point, which is why I'm bringing it to y'all for discussion.
Charlie, is there a way where, you know, we could split it up so that we could take advantage of lower interest rates at the 2 point, like, let's just say it's the 2.25 number for phase one, no, and then like turn around right behind that and then?
We can do, we can do multiple closings where basically you would do one bond ordinance. We would craft, the, the bond attorney would, I believe he has to craft it almost like a series, okay? Which is the way our 2013 one is set up. Yeah, it, it was one bond, you know, bond ordinance. But we've got it tiered to where like the, the, the beach club payment, that 51,500, that got pulled into that, that 2013 bond refinance. So that gets, so we, we're able to chip away at it. So what you could do is where you're only doing a, you could do two separate borrowings under the same bond. I did verify with, with First Tryon that we can set it up that way.
And it's the same interest rate.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we could get it locked in.
Well, if you wait two years to close on the second one or a year and a half, hey, let's build all of phase one and then do the borrowing phase two, bank's not going to hold that interest rate that long. We did ask that question as well.
And how long will it take to complete phase two?
They said, Joey, what, 18 months to do all, everything that you saw, that you see on that map, 18 months from the time they start.
So how does that play out if we do a two-tier borrowing system?
Basically, you're only, you're not paying.
We're only talking about five months or something?
It, it's just going to, it's going to shift your, it, it really just helps you more on your cash flow more so than anything else because you're, you're basically kicking interest down the road a little bit. It's not, I don't think you're going to see a massive savings. I can have them work a model up that I can shoot out to council, you know, maybe by next week.
But we'd be locked in at whatever the, the first tier would be.
The only rate, the only reason I would do this, this way is to, to jump on that low rate. I didn't think there'd be that big of a difference between the 2.75 and the 2.25 until we, we toggle back and forth between the two. And it came up, I believe it was like 554,000 and change. Even between 2.75 and 2.5, you're still at almost two and a quarter in interest, 275,000 in interest over the life of the 20 years.
And potentially, again, we're under, we're south of 2.25, it won't be much, but would even be more of a savings.
Bob, what's your opinion on that?
Sorry?
Bob, what's your opinion?
You gotta go to the microphone, Bob.
I would, I would recommend moving on this with the 2.25% because I think the rates are going to be going up. I agree with Amy Vindner.
Yeah, so do I.
Rates are going up with gas rates, everything's going up right now with the new administration. So I would recommend this as a chance to do it. 500,000 is a lot, and if we have a two-bond closings, extra closing costs, et cetera.
Okay. Thanks.
I would recommend that.
All right.
What, what's the difference in, like, what's the closing cost impact? Is it minimal?
Usually between non, each, each. Usually between nine hu- each, each closing cost anywhere between sixty thousand and ninety thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
With your legal fees and bond work and things like that.
And then if you close again in two years, there's extra interest rates too.
Right, okay, thank you. Well, I've had the opportunity to talk about this with Charlie for a while, so I'm, already got my opinions, so I've been settled, but if you guys want some time to think about it, you know, otherwise, I'm prepared to move forward, what do you?
Yeah, Charlie, what I've, Charlie's met with all of us individually, um, we've met with Joey and Bob as well. Um, our financial advisors have discussed this as well, so, um, this is, these are not new numbers that we've seen. This is just a way for the public to see it today. Um, but there's not gonna be another opportunity to complete both phases. Um, if we just went with phase one, the fear is that it would be another ten years before phase two is ever
Absolutely.
happens. Um, and that's not something I, I think, I think just as council, I think the city is behind this project, and this is our opportunity, the numbers make sense, we need to move forward. Um, the, the interest in doing the bond prior to the bids makes me a little nervous, I will say. Um, but if, if it's a savings of half a million dollars, that, that makes sense too. So, yes, for both phases for me.
Build it. Yes, for me.
Um, so, uh, thank you for that, yeah, as, I, I mean, of course I've met with you guys too. Um, as I mentioned in our meeting in December, I, I did wanna see both phases, um, funded, and so I'm glad that you guys were able to, to take a new look at the numbers. So thank you for, for doing that. Um, the only concern, and I know I shared this with you guys, um, earlier this week still, is I'm, I'm struggling to, on, on that Windhaven contribution. Um, and so I know that we've talked about playing around with that number, seeing if we can, you know, maybe it's up H tax ten thousand dollars each year. Um, you know, there are additional other revenues, if, if it's, if it's absolutely needed, uh, maybe it's a split of, of some sort. I don't know if it's fifty-fifty or sixty-forty or what.
If I can, one thing, one thing I wanna point out, um, is, you know, just because we're showing this here, uh, now, when you look over here at your balances, they're still pretty hefty, okay, in those first, in those first few years, okay? So just because we may be allocating it here now, you know, all of a sudden we sell the naming rights on two or three of the baseball fields. Well, for those payments, all of a sudden just, they, they, they go, you know, they, they don't stay in that pot anymore, they, they go back into a Windhaven pot. Um, yeah, we, we've got the room, I mean, as you look through the first, you know, what, seven, eight years, nine years? I mean, you, you got a pretty hefty balance, right? So we can, we can start eliminating, but I mean, if you'll watch the, uh, if you'll watch this number here, the one fifty-seven, nine twenty-eight, yeah, for each one of these that I take off, yeah, it just, it drops down a little lower. Yeah, I go down, it drops down a little lower, yeah. There, there is no, there is no exact, you must have X amount in the ending balance. You know, it's not like the, um, uh, our T CUD budget, where you've gotta have, you know, that, that one two, one point two times coverage. But obviously you don't wanna see this at a dollar either. Yeah, but the good thing is, is we're not talking construction cost, you've got a bid, you've got a contract. Yeah, they're gonna, we're gonna build in the contingency on that end, so bids come in at, let's say, ten point eight. You know, we, we will put in that contingency for that, for the u-ohs that happen, the unsuitable soils or what have you, uh, that you come along with. So there, yeah, I'm not overly, overly worried on the, on the Windhaven funds. Um, understanding exactly what you're talking about, um, Alicia, but
Yeah, I just want there to be, um,
Yeah.
When it comes time to determine what's there, I mean, that, you know, that money was, was a contribution from each home by the builder, right?
Correct.
For this amenity, and I would just, um, I would hope that we could have some of that at least saved so that we could actually have funding, um, to put something there when it's time. Um, so that, that was my concern. My other question was just, um, I heard you, you know, when you were talking about some of the other, um, the debt that we have, like the Beach and Swim Center, you mentioned the land next to it as well. And so part of me is just kinda thinking through, you know, if there are other potential opportunities, like, do we have a, like, does the city own a lot of land that we aren't, like, using? Are there opportunities to sell off pieces of property right now with the, with the hot real estate market that there is?
The city probably owns some of the most valuable property in the entire city, unfortunately, it's tied to the green belt.
Okay.
We could subdivide it and sell it, but, um, it's always gonna have that, um, in the, um, what do you call it?
The asterisk that says what you can do.
In the title that says, uh, yeah, it's land for public use, anybody can come up on it. But we've got a couple of little peninsulas off of the peninsula that probably the most expensive property, most valuable property in the city. Uh, and I hate it. I, I wish we could sell it, because I'm talking, you could sell probably five million dollars worth of property. Lakefront property that the city owns, that I don't know that there people in the market to buy property that's gonna have that type of title concern. But, um, I can definitely bring you back a report and show you which ones I'm talking about if council wants to throw them out there and see if there's any takers. I mean, there's like seriously valuable properties.
We sold land in the last council and
Mm-hmm.
Got a lot more than I thought we'd get for it.
Yep.
But I don't know if you can sell green belt, with who's
Well, you'd have to subdivide it off of the green belt, but I can, um, yeah, the city only owns the green belt because a bankruptcy judge decided way back when that this is gonna be yours, you know, whether we wanted it or not, so.
Yeah.
If it's commercially viable, I'm
I can definitely, uh, put those, put those together and email them to you, see y'all can look at it.
I like that.
Yeah.
We can have those conversations, absolutely.
That, I think that'd be great, um, I think if anything, just, you know, as we're, it'd be good to know. I think if, if not for this purpose, just for, um, you know, other purposes potentially, or, or future councils. Um, and then the other thing, of course, I wanna, well, I know we've had conversations about operational impacts and making sure that we're, we're getting a good sense of what those are gonna be, so that we can make sure,
Yep.
you know, we're not over allocating on the capital side and don't have the operating funds to support it.
Still looking to bring y'all back, uh, bring your, uh, that in May. Um, early looks, uh, like, what, one, maybe two full-time employees? And then a handful seasonal part-time, uh, to help on weekends, tournaments, things like that. So, we are, we are moving quickly through that. Your tournament revenue, uh, coming off of this park, uh, conservatively speaking, uh, should be anywhere between three hundred and three hundred and sixty thousand dollars annual gross.
Good, that's good.
So.
Um, okay, and then my, my very last point, sorry, Ryan, um, is, um, I, I feel like, just based on the, the public comments today, I wanted to just ask, what are, what, what will be the opportunities for skaters to participate and, and utilize this park? And are there, and or are there opportunities to incorporate some, like, skate features throughout the, like, trail system or, or whatnot? As we're
I think it's something we can take, we can take a look at. Um, I'll be honest with you, we started looking at, um, um, the report from the school district as to why they moved away from it. I gotta spend some time with our, uh, resident geologist with Joel Wood's office to find out what we can actually put on Windhaven without having to excavate a lot, a lot of dirt over there. Um, the, the report, I, I'll be honest with you, I only understand maybe ten percent of it. Um, but there's something in that report that made the school district decide that they didn't wanna lease that property anymore. Um, I've shared that, uh, previously with council in an executive session. Um, I wanna get our engineers to look at the due diligence work that the school district already did on it. Um, and then at least be able to, April-May timeframe, be able to come back to you and say, okay, here's what you actually can do at Windhaven, it may just be trails. Uh, it could be a skate park, could be pickleball, I don't know. Um, but, yes, we, we need to look through that. Is there, is there space, and I'm gonna do this, even though this is probably going to shut the screens off, but let's try it anyway. Oh, get it switched. Y'all saw the footprint of the playground that Joey showed you, it's, it's massive. And it only takes up literally this little corner right here. Yeah, there may be some opportunities through the rest of this to still have field space, maybe some type of concrete space. The only, the only key here though is everything on the Duke property, which is all in, in this phase one and two is your open play meadow, maintenance, and all the parking lot, that's part of the FERC review. And it wasn't on there during the initial submittal to FERC to put it into the Recreation Management Plan. So we can go back, I mean, you just, if we're talking about something like what Ben Holman described to me, I think some of what was described tonight, that, hey, it's just, it's a concrete plaza and there's concrete benches, and we're just not kicking skateboarders off of it. Yeah, there may be a potential, you know, Duke FERC may not have any heartburn over it, yeah. Um, but to put something out there that's got quarter pipes and rails and, you know, things like that, where it's like, oh, that's a skate park. You know, everybody and their brother looks at it, that's a skate. FERC may all of a sudden say, well, wait a minute, that wasn't in your Recreation Management Plan. So, I mean, we can have that conversation with Jennifer Bennett, uh, our contact with Duke, uh, she can have those conversations to see. Yeah, so there may be a spot, yeah. I was shocked that that massive playground only took up that one little corner. And we were like, oh, what are we doing with the rest of that? Cause it was designed to have three, like, different age groups. So we've still got room, even if we stick another, you know, tot lot, you know, two to five-year-old lot out there, we still have room. So it's just a matter of how do we lay it out, how does it look? You know, what does that cost, and what does FERC say to it? That's probably the only place out there that it could potentially, um, where it could potentially slide in. Um, and again, yeah, I wanna work through with, uh, with Chris, um, uh, from our engineering department, just to see, so the council is, whether it's this council or, um, you know, incoming councils, what can we do at Windhaven? What are our opportunities? It may just be walking trails and disc golf, I, I mean, or it could be anything we want to, I just really don't know at this point.
Okay, cool, thank you.
What was the estimate from Camp Co for the amphitheater? Do we, do you guys remember?
Two fifty?
Uh, I believe it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
But I'm sure it was a lot nicer than we probably needed to be.
Gotcha, thanks.
Ryan?
Me, no, Bob, Joey, Charlie, great job, that's why we pay you the big bucks.
You got a thumbs up from you?
Yeah, um, So it's just to, it, it, the thumb up is to bring both phases, to do both phases, is it to go ahead and bring you the funding, uh, as quickly as possible?
Okay. I just wanna reiterate, um, cause you've talked about parking, you know, very robust parking, we obviously park in a security, because we know now that we have some, um,
Yes.
vandalism at the other parts.
Yes, sir.
So we wanna build in a good, robust security
Part of, part of the staffing we're talking about is, is park security, park rangers that are opening, closing, riding the trails.
Or even, is there, is there fencing involved? Is there cameras involved? Is there
Right.
movement detectors involved? I, I don't know, just, just to get this little, it's, it's not, I know it doesn't cost that much when somebody messes up a restroom or something, but still, it's the, it's the, just the
It's the annoyance.
It's annoyance, and it's just, it's a, it's a bad mark on us to do that. And then the parking again is, we, we can't overlook the, what happens at Runde Park with, with the golf carts. So if we have golf carts that take up a parking space where a car can go, that's where three golf carts could really go. If we, we really need to figure out, cause that, golf carts aren't going away. Uh, I think there're gonna be more, as, as people find out how much fun they are. We gotta figure out a better plan for golf, for golf cart parking, whether it be, um, uh, doesn't have to necessarily be paved, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be. But it's gotta be something where they're not taking up a car space. And then, of course, the, where they can plug in like we do up at, at Windjammer. Um, I, I noticed there yesterday, there was a couple of carts up there on Windjammer, so even in the winter, they were up there, okay? Is that it? Everybody's got, okay, thank you, Charlie. You wanna move on to B?
Yes, sir, Capitol Workshop. Pull this up. All right, so these items, uh, council were brought before you, um, during the, uh, budget workshop. Um, kinda put a pin in those to, to be able to talk about, uh, once we got through, um, through January. This is what we're bringing for you, uh, before you tonight. Um, we've got, uh, the Motorola radios, and I'm, uh, either one of the chiefs can get up and talk about these if council has specific questions. Um, the, the model that we have is no longer being, is no longer serviceable by Motorola, so we've gotta upgrade, uh, go, move into the new ones. Um, so you've got six radios in PD, um, two patrol cars and, and, and the outfits, uh, and then two more of the radar signs, um, that you, you've seen in various, various places in the city. Um, for the fire, uh, fire department, two ra- uh, three radios there, and then a non-firefighting vehicle there. Um, we took the jet ski and stuff off of this list that you saw previously. Um, Chief Hasty was able to get that for, for free, which are the best kinds of jet skis and watercrafts and rescue things. Uh, so the things that we're talking, that we would bring before you next month are the three items in law enforcement and just these first two items here, uh, as it relates to the, as relates to the general fund. We cannot, uh, finance the, um, excuse me, the driveway repairs. Um, banks like to have assets that they could actually come and take back if, you know, we decided not to pay them, and they're not real keen on pulling up asphalt out of a parking lot and driveway. Um, the other items, um, there's the fifty thousand, again, for Catawba Park, um, that we showed you on the previous. Uh, we've got a engineering, uh, for engineering design of the Stonecrest Connector Trail, uh, at fifteen thousand. This would go from the, basically the Dove Trace Lift Station, Beach and Swim Center area, over to, um, where the, uh, Stonecrest Office Park is. Um, we've got a new number in here now for you, um, this is the, um, Boardwalk Bridge Trail type thing, uh, between the manors, um, and the rest of, uh, and Pod G and Lakewood. The HOA got this quote, it's like a tracks board material, um, they provided Heather, Heather sent it to me, hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, we had not envisioned doing the trail that way. Um, I, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know that the city should be the ones doing this trail. I think we give the HOA an easement, let them do this trail. Because Pod H, even when it's completed, only has seventy-nine homes in it. Um, yeah, I mean, you're, you're not talking about a trail that's going to be used by the general populace, a very, very small segment. But it's, I, I don't think that needs to be a conversation tonight, as council had indicated, uh, in the work plan. Let's put these things out, and let's get some community, uh, more community feedback on prioritizing the, the various trail segments of the, the bed, uh, the ped bike plan. Um, and then the last thing we've got there is, uh, to finish off the landscaping, Stonecrest Boulevard, Hubert Graham Way. So you can see your total nugget, uh, of all those items above of five hundred and twenty-six thousand, ninety dollars. The part to be, uh, bank financed, which basically we're just spreading that payment over four years at what will probably amount to about a one point eight-five, one point nine percent, uh, interest rate, uh, over that four years. So that's gonna be your payment, uh, approximate payment, and it wouldn't come due until twenty twenty-two, when we've got other of these capital lease things that'll be coming off the books, uh, at the same time. Around forty-eight, forty-nine thousand dollars that comes off the books, so it's basically a push. Um, this two fifteen, five eighteen, that was what the number was in the operational contingency, uh, uh, under the approved budget. Um, if we take all the things that aren't being financed up above, which includes, you know, the fifty thousand for Catawba Park, fifteen thousand here, hundred and fifty, uh, there, puts you at two fifty-six, five hundred, or puts you in a negative balance of forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. If you remove just the trail items, um, the, the one fifty and the fifteen, that puts you with an operational contingency of one twenty-four oh eighteen. Um, which sounds pretty hefty, but council, I do wanna go ahead and let you, uh, make you aware, your police overtime and fire overtime are already getting kind of out of whack, uh, because of COVID, okay? And we don't know that we're going to absolutely get reimbursed on, on, on those times like we did in twenty twenty. Uh, with, as, as people are out, uh, on quarantine and sick, other officers are, and firefighters are having to come in to cover those shifts. Uh, and they're coming in and they're on overtime at that point to cover those shifts, cause they're also still working their normal shifts. So, um, with the amount of folks that we had go out, especially December, January, were pretty much our, our worst two months. Those, those, the overtime numbers are, are much higher than what they would normally be. Um, so, and the only reason I say that is the two fifteen, five eighteen was all revenues come in as exactly as projected, all expenditures are exactly as projected. Now, I told you the, the bad side, you know, we got some expenses that are up, we've also got revenue that are up. Yeah, I just told you, we're already at a hundred and twenty-two impact fees. And that's, that's a hundred and twenty-two building permits, yeah, and the associated business licenses, and the inspection fees that come with those. So, um, revenues overall are trending very, very well, um, through, through the end of January. Bob, would you, any, anything I've left out there? Okay. So, thanks, Bob, appreciate that. Um, the, uh, the next piece I wanna show you, um, yeah, and then we'll, we can come back into this. The last part of that borrowing, uh, is actually gonna be related to T CUD. Um, they were able to do cash, um, out for a vehicle that, so we don't have to put it through here. Uh, you just talked about backup power generator, we, ways for our treatment plant number two, there's your updated quote number there, sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, and your approximate payment. And so what we would envision bringing to council next Tuesday during your regular meeting is a resolution not to exceed two hundred and seventy thousand, as we've done in the past. Uh, Bob has this out for bid in preparation for this now with the, uh, various financial institutions. And you get a total nugget of sixty-nine thousand, one eighty-eight. Um, obviously sixteen of that is in T CUD, the remainder would be Obviously sixteen of that is in TCUD, the remainder would be in general fund, none of which would be in the current fiscal year. Without the two trail items in there, at least at this point, you're at ninety-one thousand, five hundred that you would cash fund. So.
How much is out of the general fund?
Those would be general fund items, yes, sir. It would be the Fire Station Two driveway, Catawba Park.
I'm talking about TCUD stuff.
Oh, the TCUD stuff would be in the TCUD budget, not in general fund.
Not general fund.
That is correct. That is correct. All right. Stormwater was the other part that we, um, we had talked about during the budget workshop. Stormwater's not going to work. We're not bringing you, we're not bringing any requests somewhere at this time, but here are the things that are needed. So, basically council, I want you to look at this as more of me setting the stage for a conversation during the budget workshop. All right? Lined up the numbers here for you, be glad, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this tonight unless y'all just start dying to. But want to make sure y'all have the numbers, um, be glad to meet with you one-on-one, two-by-two, whatever you want to do. But when you look at the numbers, um, so right here, total projected revenue for twenty twenty, based on a hundred and eighty ERUs, six oh seven, six oh eight. And here's the new, so thirty-eight thousand, that's new revenues. We can't afford what these, any of these payments with, we could probably do either a front-end loader or a dump truck. Okay? We need the front-end loader, but we only really have two and a half dump trucks. I say half because one's a tiny, tiny dump truck. The thing we need the most, especially after what we just came through, is LEFAC. Yeah, and the street sweeper helps. Yeah, uh, helps on the smaller piles, we run it year-round, things of that nature. So, these are, these are the four big needs. Now, if I take and change this from the one oh eight, which is what is currently being paid now, and change that to one twenty, so that's an additional twelve dollars, buck a month. It's all, it's, yeah, obviously they're on the, on the tax rolls. At one twenty, you can, we can afford to, to do some of that next year and then some of, and then take down the other two pieces in twenty twenty-four and be able to get these, uh, get these pieces in there. Again.
So, go back again, where did that money come from?
By changing the stormwater fee from one oh eight to one twenty.
Okay.
So, it's, it would be a twelve dollar increase. I'm not asking y'all to approve. Do I, annual, yes. Not asking y'all to approve a stormwater increase tonight at your workshop. Again, not, we're not going to come to you with any stormwater requests for this fiscal year. Just wanted to make y'all aware of it and be glad to, to meet, um, between now and then. But definitely will be a part of the, uh, budget workshop conversations. So, that's the stormwater side. Any questions on the capital request? Is council comfortable moving forward this way? Before I flip over to the work plan?
I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay.
I think several months ago, I asked, um, to stop bringing us the perpetual black hole of the fire and police department. So, we get the, the park started. We, what was that, six months ago, I guess it was? So, I know that everybody needs something, I get it. But we've talked for the last three years, we gave, we did all of our infrastructure with the police and the fire department, the water tower and all that stuff. And I said, it's time for the people of TK to get their park. We, it's, it's time for them now instead of the police department and the fire department. And I get it. You guys need all kinds of stuff to continue the job you're doing. But the people of TK have told us over and over and over, they want a park. So, we got to get a park. Let's, let's stop spending everything we got until we get the park. And we'll talk about it after we do that. That's what, that's my opinion. I'm only one of four, five votes. They can vote the way they want to, but I thought I made that perfectly clear last time that we got to stop all this spending all the time until we get the park. We've done, I think we've gone above and beyond with the fire department and the, uh, police department, building those great, fantastic buildings and all that equipment. And it's just got, it's just never-ending. It's never-ending. When does it stop? So, that's just my opinion. I'm, like I said, I'm one of five. So, if anybody else does have anything, we can move on.
I mean, do we want to talk about some of these items individually?
We talked about some of them six months ago and we decided to move on, but now they're back again six months later.
So, um, I know that, of course, just looking at the different items here, so I'll, I, I totally get when the, when our radios are not within, if they're not supported, I mean, I think that's a pretty big deal if we can't be communicating out. You know, I, I've seen quantity here and I guess that would be my question. So, I see a quantity of six and then I see a quantity of three. And so, could you remind me, I'm sure you guys went over this before, but it's been a while and my memory is, you know, not the best. So, can you guys remind me, is, is, are we doing like a phased, um, like change out? Or would, would that be it? Or, okay. And, and I guess when you answer that too, is this going to, is this like a part of a, we're always going to have these? Like, because just given techno, like, would, help us understand too, like, from a technology standpoint and an expectation standpoint again?
Yeah, so as far as the radios, Motorola is our contract vendor through the county. And they upgrade their radios and they upgrade their platforms on those radios, just like, I guess, a computer is how I would say it. And they reprogram our radios at least twice a year. When the radios go out of end of life, they no longer reprogram those radios. So, when we need to update the radio and it's out at, at the end of life, if they won't reprogram it, then we lose our communication with the rest of the county. And that's basically what we're both facing. We've tried to phase this in over time. Uh, I have documentation from York County that shows that they're end of life, if anybody wants to see it. That, uh, that they are telling us that they're no longer good anymore. So, just like the tasers, when we have tasers, our tasers are at the five-year end of life. They're now a liability. Now, tasers aren't on there, I'm just saying that's, uh, it's just like computers or anything else. We're going to have to come back and we're going to have to ask for that equipment to lessen our liability on things that have an end of life that we have to use as tools that we need every day. So, those are where some of that comes from. The vehicle for us, I, I know that we put in for vehicles. When I got here, we were way, way behind. It was a seven-year plan to try to get us to where we need. We have a two thousand and two Mercury Graham Marquis that breaks down every time somebody takes it. So, there's a phase of, of equipment that we've been trying to get to over five to six years. But that will never stop because vehicles come to an end of life at six, seven years is the recommended time that you shelf those. Because a vehicle, if I sell it at seven years, I might get ten thousand. If I sell it at fifteen years, I'm going to get two thousand. Meanwhile, I'm going to spend two thousand dollars more a year in maintenance on that vehicle. So, that's what these requests are. They're, they're not wants, they are needs. The what's in front of you is needs. None of those, none of those are, we just want that stuff. The cars, the radios and the speed signs were something that we worked through, we talked through with council because we've had such a high request for speeding signs. So, that's from my side of it for the radio part. I didn't know if you had anything to add as far as the radios.
We're in the same place. We've actually got more radios than that and they're out of date. What we've done is we've changed the usage in the department and assigned them to a riding position instead of to an individual. So, we've lessened the number of radios that we're going to come to you and ask for, but we're in the same place. We've got radios that are end of life that when they die, they're done. And, uh, you know, like I said, we've got some that are gone and that's what we're asking for.
Yeah. So, well, I've got you both up there. So, in, in terms of the radar signs, I'm totally supportive of us getting those. I, I know just me personally, driving down TK Drive whenever I, when it was right there, even in front, it was just a really good awareness, like a check for me, a reminder. And, and I think that, you know, I, I hear requests for them all the time throughout the community. So, I, I would be supportive of those, but, I mean, sixty-five hundred dollars, I mean, do we not have, like, some sort of operational, supply budget that, that could just be funded from?
For the signs?
For the radar signs. Does it have to be like a capital request? Like, it kind of feels like one of those things that's more.
It doesn't have to be. It was one of those new things that was identified during the budget process.
Yeah.
That we stuck on that, on that second sheet, if you, if you recall, we had the operational budget and then had the new request stuff, it was on there, we left it on there. Could we, could we cash that through, um, one of the operational line items? Absolutely. We can.
Okay. And, and so, thank you for talking about the cars too, because I think that's an important thing to know is just when our vehicles do get so old, the maintenance costs can sometimes outweigh, from a, from an operational standpoint. I, I would be, of, of course, David, I hear you and, and so, and I appreciate that too. I, I get it.
I mean, we just talked about this in October.
Yeah.
We just did the budget and here we are. Four months later. And did we, did we need it really bad back then and we'd need it more bad now or what, what's it?
I, I'm a little confused, Mayor, because when we did the budget workshops in July, all of these things were, we're going to bring these back to you in February, March to talk about out of the two hundred and fifteen thousand you've got in contingency, which one of these things you would want to fund at that point in time? None of this stuff is new and it's all still needed.
No, no, I get it, I get it. But, I mean, how often are we going to come back and keep asking for the same stuff?
With it, I mean, these, I, I look at these as operational expenses.
Right, I don't, just why, why didn't we put it in the October budget? We didn't have the money or what?
We weren't sure what, what the, we wanted to hold off because we weren't sure how revenues were going to come in. I mean, keep in mind, we were having this budget workshop in July.
Right.
I had no idea what our budgets, I mean, we, we took a stab at the budgets. We didn't know what the COVID impacts were going to be.
So, these radios die on May fifteenth or what day do they just, are they done? They don't, they don't have a, we don't, we can't go another six months or what?
They're, they're not going to update them now. So, they're.
They're already out of, out of service.
They're, they're out of service. They're, they're not updating them. Motorola.
And Mayor, just, just to be clear.
But I don't understand why, that wasn't an operational thing in October when we did the budget.
It was, we did.
It was. These are all identified as, as needed. But as we did the budget workshop in July, we said, council, what we would like to do is see the taxes come in, see what, get a revenue projection, what does October through December look like in the building community? Where are those permit fees coming in at? What is this going to look like? And then bring this back to y'all, which is what we're doing tonight. But, I mean, it was, it was a need in October, it was a need in July.
I just don't remember the radios. Okay, you say so.
There.
Sorry?
Do you want to see this?
I got it right here.
Oh, this is from, or this is from. So, um, I, I, just for councils, I, I mean, I'm supportive if, if, of funding the, the radios. Certainly don't want there to be any issues with communication and people's greatest hour of need. And, and I understand the patrol vehicles. If, I mean, uh, no disrespect to the, to the admin vehicles, but I will ask, is there any, anything we can do with those ones? Maybe those can ride out a little bit longer to David's point, just is there, is there any way to?
Yeah, we're, we're on a, right now, the admin vehicles are on their sixth year and I don't have a replacement plan on those until the eighth year. So, that's eight years in service, meaning on the ninth year that we'll be replacing those. So, it's, you know, that's already difficult. Usually it's recommended by seven years for most fleet vehicles and I'm sure that Gus can probably talk more to fleet vehicles than I can. But that's the recommendation upon law enforcement. And, uh, we can definitely push that can down the road a little bit further.
I mean, could it be on the next budget? Could it be the next October budget? Realistically, we're talking.
The administrative vehicles? I'm, I'm not planning on doing the administrative vehicles until the cycle after that one. But it's one of those things, vehicles, I put it in the capital plan six, five years ago, that it's a constant thing. We need to at least replace four vehicles a year, put them on a cycle so that we're maintaining a fleet that's operational and our maintenance costs aren't extremely high and we get more money on the resale out of it for the city's budget.
Got it.
And we're already, we're already over ten years. So, the vehicle that we're talking about replacing is ten years old. So.
What is that, the X-cour?
We're just going to push it down the road. I mean, it, you know, we're going to shuffle it, but it's going to sit. I mean, we've got a, basically, we're going to move it to a position where it doesn't move very much. It's a, it's in pretty rough shape, Mayor.
All right.
It's a third owner, it's been wrecked a few times, put back together.
You guys are expensive.
By the way, having driven that Tahoe, I'd never wrecked it, so don't, that wasn't.
And I assume all the payments on this had already been worked in, that spreadsheet earlier, Catawba Park?
Yes.
So, one thing I know that we've got, um, or we've asked the planning commission to do, thinking about some of the other items on here, is to evaluate, um, the, the sidewalk and pedestrian, um, the bike plan. Okay, yeah. So, um, perhaps we, you know, wait for them to come back with information on what's, what they think or how they've ranked things in terms of priority level. And then we, you know, evaluate that to make decisions in terms of like what items we're funding around investing in our trail system.
Yeah, I, I would absolutely agree with that. And just to add, um, on the trail that goes to the manors, the HOA in Lakewood has allocated up to eighteen thousand towards that one fifty that they would contribute. I think we can get creative with some of these ideas, but I want to come back and see what, what the planning commission has to say first. I agree with you.
This would all be solved if we just had fifteen million dollars. What's the problem? Come on, Bob. Listen up the checkbook a little bit. It's only money.
He can postdate it for us.
Why didn't you buy some GameStop? I mean, we'd be there.
I, I have heard of municipalities participating in lottery, like buying lottery tickets.
I don't think, not in South Carolina, I don't think they do.
It is a thing.
It's amazing what just, just a little bit of money we need and everything, everybody would have their dreams come true for this year. Then there's another year.
Anything else on the, on the capital items at this point? Or do you want to go ahead and move to the, uh, work plan?
Do you need us to make a motion?
Uh, we, we, we're going to bring you a resolution, uh, Tuesday night and y'all, y'all vote at that point in time. Thumbs up, thumbs down. But based on, Alicia, based on your comments, um, we'll, we'll pull the radar signs out and do that. I'll, I'll work with Chief Park on that and we'll, we'll fund that operationally. Instead of taking a sixty-five hundred dollars out for four years and paying interest on that.
What was the fifty thousand Catawba Park? That's.
Yeah, so that, that was going, going back to your other screen. That was.
Got you.
Um, yeah, this right here.
Yep.
Okay.
Go back to the, where you were last time before that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So, if we, if we sit tight on these things here, um, until planning commission comes back, this is the, um, design and, and trails or, you know, whatnot, uh, that would put us. And again, we've got, this is just an estimate for the driveway repairs up at Station Two. We've got to put that out for bid. But I think we can, I think we can probably beat that number, that thirty-four thousand. Modest amount left here on the landscaping, that would be cash funded. And then obviously, we'd move over the, um, the, this to the Catawba Park Fund. And we'll bring you a resolution for the rest. And, you know, when we, when we hit June, July, you know, we're getting into that last quarter of the fiscal year. I mean, um, or the end of the, the third quarter. Yeah, we'll, we'll really know where we're, where we're sitting financially and be able to hit that target a lot better for you and tell you, okay, hey, we thought, we, we thought it was two fifteen, it was actually half a million because the building permits have been rolling in super fast. You know, what are the things, you know, off of the, off of the work plan or, or what have you? Do we want to go ahead and get, get rolling on? We could definitely have those conversations, no doubt.
I mean, I want all this stuff, but I just, the pot of gold.
On the capital? All right, on the, I'm doing good on time. On the work plan, um, I think the work plan I got had like maybe thirteen, fourteen things on it. So, I've put this together, council, y'all, y'all saw this in your packet. It's a total of, um, technically a total of nineteen things because I broke out the city facilities into several options here. Obviously, we've talked about Catawba Park, uh, for the better part of the evening. So, it sounds like we can maybe turn that one green. Looks like this one's underway, uh, or about to be underway, the conversation with, uh, planning and getting them working on that. So, I think you can turn that one green. If DOT wasn't doing this one, I'd feel a lot better about turning it green now.
Can we maybe just ask him for an update, just to, just to make sure we're still on track?
That, yeah, last time I talked to Vic a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about another matter and I said, hey, you still getting across a walk anytime soon? And he said, they're, it's spring. And I was like.
What does that mean to Vic?
What does that mean to Vic?
Exactly. I'm thinking anytime between April and July.
He said April, May is what he said.
Yes.
Originally.
I'm thinking anytime between April and July, so, but I.
That's super April.
Right, exactly.
I might see Vic this Friday.
So there may be, there may be some operational funds that have to go to that to.
But I'll ask him.
Fix the uh sidewalk uh back to that stamp paint standard, um, but what, we can handle that operationally. Um, the review and update of business license, uh, policies and procedures, I know EDC's been talking about that, so there's new stuff coming out this year, Council, on business licenses from the state, so I think, yeah, perhaps if Council's okay, maybe the direction is we just, whatever the state pushes out, we just keep following that. Uh, the online portal should be ready, I think by uh midsummer, um, when they push that out. We've already adopted all their latest um uh ordinances, uh, apparently there's a new one coming out this spring, I I can't imagine what else they're changing in it, but uh we may be ahead of the curve on the ordinance side of things, but um let's, let's get through maybe this year and get, at least get all the new things the state is pushing our way uh out to all the cities, uh, and then we can swing back around on that one. Um, but as as of right now, we are currently a hundred percent in compliance with what the um, with the, with the ordinance, what the state has pushed out. Um, update procurement policy, you got a nominal operational cost in there, Council, and that's just the cost to Senate of Munich Code get it codified, it's anywhere between five hundred thousand dollars, so I put the seven fifty, a lot of it depends on number of pages and things like that, that's why it's online and to give us our printed copies for the books. Um, I just need to know what, if anything, I need to do with that, um. Is there, I mean.
Alicia, are you gonna take the lead on that and then talk to Bob?
Mm-hmm, yep, so um the mask has um two different versions of of procurement policy actually that they recommend and so right now, I'm in the process of going through both of those, comparing those to what we have. I would like to sit down with Bob, uh, you and Charlie and just get a better sense of like um.
Yeah.
Spending levels and things like that, so make sure that we are setting appropriate policy that doesn't hinder but helps support.
Right.
Um.
Okay.
And and of course, that our policy is, you know, with the, the direction of what Council wants. Uh, also, Charlie, if you could help me with this one, um, reaching out to perhaps Jeff Shaker.
Mm-hmm.
And seeing what type of data uh mask might have on like spending thresholds for procurement policies, I'm not sure if if that data exists from the municipalities that are part of.
Probably not, at least nothing I've seen from mask without having to just poll people 'cause like I know when um, when I was working on the, on the policy, on the procurement code that y'all have now, looking at Rock Hills, theirs was way higher on on each of those tiers, I was like, good lord, let's pull those down just, just a little, you know, kinda just thinking how we, you know, the way our various departments operate, so my guess is it's gonna be different based on city and based on size of city, but I'll reach out, I can reach out Jeff and ask him.
Yeah, it'd be good to see what their thresholds are compared comparative to their, their spent, like their budget and population.
We had talked about a march, bringing that first read to Mar- is that still, do you think you can?
I I would like to stick with that timeframe if that's okay.
We'll make ourselves available to meet whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'll reach out to you guys.
Okay, so with that one, uh, hearing that conversation, I think we could turn that one green. Uh, I think um, at least from what I've been told, I think planning commission's got this one uh rolling, the next one on the small area plan for mixed use districts, um, I tell you what, let me zoom this in a little bit, cause. Let's make this a little bigger, make it a little easier for everybody to see. There we go. Um, so the small area use plan uh for um mixed use districts, uh, turn that one, I think we can turn that one green. Uh, public art ordinance, um. I mean, we got a resolution, it wouldn't be hard to convert it to an ordinance, um, conversation we had internally in the office, um, maybe we start soliciting for people to be on the art committee that the resolution calls for, maybe they wanna have some input to the ordinance or does Council want us to just bring you the ordinance, bring it to you in ordinance format?
Well, I think that this gets back to some of the conversations we had had last year um around the budget and figuring out how do we like fund um a really cool or like potentially robust public art program and one of the things that um I know, I've talked to you, David, about this and and Heather as well, um, maybe, Gus, we might have talked about this too, I'm not sure, but um is is allocating a percent of certain capital budgets um, or capital projects that would go towards this capital fund and so I think just Council, like, you know, what is our appetite for moving forward with that? Do we, do you want me to write a couple of like parameters down and you guys can respond to that and let us know, you know, do you, you know, is, are these the types of project, capital projects that you wanna allocate one percent? Is one percent good enough? Does it need to be two percent?
Yeah, I spent a good amount of time yesterday browsing through different municipalities, larger, smaller, all across the country, um, and the majority that had art policies in place, I'd say ninety percent of them use the one percent as their um benchmark, um, so.
So out of the nine million that we're about to borrow, is, are we doing ninety thousand dollars worth of art at Cataba Park?
I I mean, I think potentially up to that amount, right?
Just as if, well, I am not your art guy, so I'm gonna need somebody to tell me what art.
Yeah, if if it ends up at forty and we have a great, whatever it is, then, you know, that's money we don't have to borrow, but I think as it sits as a capital project that that would qualify as as the one percent.
Yeah, and and it doesn't necessarily have to be a standalone piece, right? Doesn't have to be a sculpture or painting or or whatnot, you can incorporate art into so many different things, um, like for example, the lighting that you already have planned, you know, in the parking lot could even be somehow cur- like used as as an art feature, um, like fencing, things like that, there's a lot of ways to get creative um and still like incorporate it into some of the design elements that you would need regardless.
I mean, if we do the buy a brick campaign, something like that, or how the benches are around that, you know, concession stand or something like that, we can make it.
Sure.
It could count as art, um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, technically.
Spur fancy it up a little, I don't know.
Technically, it would need to go through the art commission to like review it, you'd have to have an artist, like it, and and it's really good timing when you're working on the design now to engage with an artist so that they can like see your vision and you can start incorporating, um, you know, whatever it is into the design upfront versus trying to have, like, you've already got it determined and then they're trying to fit on top, so um, so now it actually would be a really good time to to pursue something.
Okay.
And.
So what do you want the next steps on this one to be?
Make sure you could skateboard on it.
Got it.
Yeah, I think solicit a, a council, so as we're reviewing for committees, maybe it's not next month since we already have that kind of on the plan, but the following month.
Start advertising for it.
Yeah, start advertising for it now so that we could review applicants and get those on the books and then as, and bring a resolution or an ordinance, I guess, it would have to be if it's, has the one percent included. And we can just take verbiage, I mean, there's so many that exist out there to kind of like piecemeal one together that that makes sense for us.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll get working on advertising for that uh, that, that council. Um, the next one, evaluation of stormwater ordinance, um, yeah, I think your, your city engineer needs to be involved, plus the cost to update the code, so you're roughly a thousand dollars, no big deal, we can handle that operationally in the stormwater budget. Um, just to, as a word of caution, whatever, however you wanna take it, Council, keep in mind that any updates that you do to this particular uh ordinance, this particular code, is not going to apply to anything that's already plotted. So Trinity, you know, uh Wind Haven, um courtyards, uh, things that are already underway would not apply to them, what it would apply to if Council were to update and let's say, take it from the, you know, right now, it has to, uh, all designs have to meet the ten year, uh, ten year storm model. If you wanted to take it up to the fifty year, right, which is the next, you know, storm size up, it's gonna apply to River Falls, uh, it would apply to the commercial in Wind Haven, it would apply to the commercial in Game Home and not saying this needs to be the deciding factor, but increasing from that ten to that fifty, all right, which is kinda, you know, you know, ten, fifty, hundred, um, will definitely increase development cost, um, so just something to keep in mind. Uh, don't know that that's gonna be the end all be all that might scare a potential commercial developer away. Maybe it's who cares if it scares them away because, you know, this is how we wanna do it, just something to keep in mind, but, you know, um, I know uh, it's either Greenville County or City of Greenville, they actually designated sensitive areas for if you build within this area of the particular creek that always flooded, that has to be on a fifty year design, everything else in the county was a ten year design. So, you know, whether, whether you're using, um, I think, um, Cataba Cod could potentially be a, a good resource there, uh, which wouldn't cost us any extra money because of our tech- technical assistance funds we already pay to them, um, I think you definitely should have uh Joel and Andy Wood from uh Wooden Associates involved as your engineers. Um, yeah, I, yeah, when we had the Stormwater Committee, there's several people in the city that have very strong stormwater backgrounds, they do it for a living or did it up until they retired, I mean, I don't think you would have a shortage of people wanting to get involved, but not, yeah, not sure how much you want to do there, so um, just let me know what, what next steps and who you want to take the lead on it, whether that's a planning commission thing or if that's a small group, um, you know, Susan and I can work together to pull together, yeah, y'all tell me.
So I believe this was deferred to the uh, the planning commission because it was on their agenda to discuss this past meeting, um, they did have a, a, a pretty lengthy conversation, I would say, about um, about like potential options, um, we are blessed with a member who on the planning commission that has a, a background in stormwater, um, and I believe he does that for a living as well, um, so he was able to, to add in to his expertise along with, you know, Susan and um, and staff, so um, I think what they're doing at this point is getting together a list of recommendations that they would like to recommend to, to city council for consideration, so I don't know that it will be super robust, um, but they did identify a couple of things like, you know, Charlie just, and Rebecca, I don't know if you wanna speak to any of it, but. Um, uh, Rebecca from the planning commission is here, so um, but, you know, just a couple of things, um, putting greater buffers around the creek so you can't build within like a certain, like greater distance around the creek, uh, increasing the amount of green space within each development and then of, um, one of the things that Charlie mentioned, um, increasing the, the, the like pond retention from like ten year flood to, I guess the next step is fifty. Um, those were, those were three things, they also talked about doing an evaluation of the creek underwater prior to construction and then post-construction, um, to, to get measurement levels of sediment, um, and doing that like an underwater study. Um, of course, to Charlie's point, all those things do cost money, but again, when it comes to one of our probably most precious resources here with the City of TK, I mean, I, I would think that if, if a developer wouldn't wanna do those things, then they probably aren't the developer we want, but.
Could I just recommend prior to, that, that sounds awesome and I'm glad that planning is already working on it, um, that's fantastic, to Charlie's point, can we just make sure prior to bringing those recommendations to Council that um, Joel, the engineers have a chance to, to review that and make sure that they sign off on whatever recommendations that are bringing, okay?
The next one, number nine, evaluates Serenity Point Creek remediation, uh, talking to Joel Wood, just to give uh some type of parameter to this, he estimated that to do the engineering design uh and permit um through Army Corps and things of that nature would be between forty and fifty thousand dollars, that's why I listed the forty-five, just did that for a lot of the things that I ended up getting ranges for, their pre-designed cost estimate to remediate and just talking through reach two, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars.
Um, one question on that one, I thought I recalled at the, the last planning commission during some of that conversation, um, and Susan, you might be able to help clarify in this, but I, I thought Shane had actually mentioned that there was another creek that was actually in worse condition than this one, Susan, did I capture that correctly? That he might have mentioned that? Do you know? Okay, sorry, if you don't mind, and and I just wanted to bring that up, not because this one isn't important, but I just wanna make sure too, if there is one that's in worse condition that we're like.
Um, yeah, yes, what we're talking about is the creek that feeds into Serenity Point is actually not a natural stream, it's a manmade stream, uh, might have been made a far, is a farm, part of a farm drainage system fifty years ago or sixty years ago, but that's, that's what, what it came, it's not a naturally occurring stream, there are some other uh areas that um, there, uh, that have a same type of severe eroding factor, but it's uh, a- again, natural sedimentation and um, it's the, again, it's the rate of flow through this, through the creek, not the amount of development, but how the rate of flow is controlled, so that's what we discussed about the, the other night.
Okay, thank you.
And Charlie, I just followed you through those recommendations, so you'll have them.
Okay. So.
I'm trying to pick the right words, um. You know, re- re- well, first off, Charlie, reach two, if I remember correctly, is that private property or is that Duke property?
Private property, it starts at Stonecrest and goes to the Duke property, reach one is in the Duke uh below the five, the five seventy contour.
So I, I mean, to me, this is um shutting the barn door after the horses long ago have, have taken off, um, and and I, I don't even know, since it's on private property, what right we as a city have to do anything, I just know, I mean, I kinda would go back to what Susan said, to, to me, as we've fought through this and fought through this over the last couple of years and probably the one of the most, well, it is absolutely the most frustrating thing since I've been on council for me personally. You know, i- is, i- is the problem, the, the, the flow of water that goes through there and the volume of water that goes through there and all the changes that were made, but the change, that w- what was done was done based on whatever rules there were at that time, at least the best I can tell, uh, you know. I- if there's gonna be a decision made to spend city funds on it, I'd, I have to recu- recuse myself, so I can't even, that's why I'm, I'm.
Guys, we, we can't afford this in any scenario, ever.
I, I, I can't be a part of that decision anyway, I just, i- it. This has been a, well, nevermind, i- i- it has been a problem since the day that project started and it's really not getting any better, it certainly got a lot worse. I think we failed.
Well, I guess, does, does more work need to be done or do we, does that need to, I, I mean, what happens from here, like, does, does it continue to, I, I guess that would be my concern, is like.
The only thing we haven't heard back on is the D-HAC report, which.
Which is forthcoming.
Yeah.
Supposedly this week.
And hope that should be the, the final, I mean, every other report that we have points in one direction and I don't foresee the D-HAC report saying something different, but I, I'll hold out judgment until we see that.
Well, I think when we had um the, the last witness come and, or expert come and talk to us, he basically said that the creek was in really bad condition, it's gonna get worse because of all of the erosion that's happening, so, I mean, let's just take the, the, the development issue out of the picture, but then just thinking about our creeks and what, what do we need to do or, or is there gonna be work that we need to do now to prevent?
Keep in mind, this, the, the entire length of this creek is on private property.
Yeah.
You're calling for four, five property lines.
Yeah.
For private property.
Wow.
I mean, I know, I see, I know where it's coming from and where it's going to, but how many people have come to us and said, please fix this water runoff and it's on their property, I said, it's, I can think of one specific resident.
Oh, yeah, David, turn your microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that. Um, that, you know, we always say water runoff is the common enemy and here, it's, it's just like all the others, just like other private properties, we haven't done anything on the other private properties. I mean, if it was our property, I guess we, we're, we're bound to do it, I get it, but it's on private property.
Technically, according to D-HAC, whether it's on our property or on private property, there, there is no obligation, you, you have the right, but not the obligation, uh, we cannot force the private homeowners, the private lot owners where the creek flows through their property to do anything, uh, to, to, to remediate as it, it goes across their property. Yeah, Mr. Karish does have the opportunity, the homeowner that, that has come before Council multiple times, does have the opportunity to dredge around his dock, um, I understand that is an expensive undertaking, but it is one that Duke will permit. I understand that is an expensive undertaking, but it is one that Duke will permit. Mr. Becker cannot get it dredged, the area by his lot, he cannot get it dredged. Duke has said that that does not occur overall on his side because he doesn't have a dockable property, doesn't have enough linear feed of shoreline. I believe his way doesn't-
What's the cost to dredge around the dock approximately?
I have no idea.
Not even a ballpark?
I know he can go ten feet around each side of the perimeter and then a ten foot wide out. My guess is probably a six-figure number. That is not something that I have priced anytime recently. As far as the dredging, I mean, or the, excuse me, the creek remediation, I mean, it's, it's a massive, massive undertaking. Going through a forest where to get equipment in there, you're probably uprooting trees and probably causing more damage before you can, at some point, that creek will stabilize itself. Water's looking for the path of least resistance. Yeah, Gus and I were talking about this the other day, what used to be an island formed at the end of that creek, the creek is now cut through that, you know, started carving out its own channel through there. Is it, is there any stabilization, you know, happening? I couldn't tell you, I mean-
All right, well, let's wait till the D HAC report.
Okay.
Come back and revisit this.
And I'll let have theirs from a, you know, it's rock and hard place scenario, but as a city, are we protected legally?
Yes. Yes, fucks too. The, getting into ten where I broke this up, ten A, ten B, that was based on the bullet points under city facilities. One was doing the Hardy Plank and stuff on the new Parks Rec Office building. That's just an approximate number. And, yeah, it could be something that could be tackled later on this fiscal year. Could be tackled with the Parks Rec Bond at Catawba Park, depending on what that funding looks like. I think you've got opportunities there, but just wanted to let you know where that looks. I would probably maybe throw a yellow on that one as well. Ten B, the Beach Club, council, I'll be honest, I would turn this one red. The wall in between the office space and the kitchen is where all the water lines are that serve the kitchen. So those would have to be routed, rerouted to knock that wall down. I don't think it makes sense to do that, but maybe a kitchenette for people that are renting the facilities, they got a refrigerator, microwave, you know, that, you know, something small in there. I think it's doable, wouldn't be very much, but Beach Club budget's the one we've got to watch the most this year. Yeah, if things don't go well this summer, we may be having a much more serious budget conversation about the Beach Club, about it becoming a kind of a public pool, more so than a membership pool.
Dredge and dirt from the creek across the way, fill it in.
Or, you know, we drain the water and make it the skate park. Two parts, one stone.
I like that.
So, I don't know that I would recommend doing this at this point, the kitchenette, but, yeah, if the membership numbers are coming in, you know, above, you know, at or above expected, this would be a nominal expense that we could, we could definitely turn around pretty easily, I believe. I would not recommend expanding that concession stand into it. More money than, I guess the juice won't be worth the squeeze, so to speak. The ten C, this was the third bullet point, it was about the parking around the tennis slash pickleball facilities. So I broke it up into ten C one, ten C two, and I don't recommend either one at this point. My opinion, and I know not just this council, but prior councils, this is now the third council I've pitched this idea to, the parking for that facility in the woods, up above the courts tied in off of Malachi, to me, makes the most sense. It keeps everybody out of the maintenance area, allows us to gate and lock up the maintenance facility. I realize people don't like trees to come down, so-
But at what cost?
Sixty, approximately sixty-two thousand dollars.
Oh, that's not as bad as I thought. I thought we talked about it something much higher than that before.
Now, to get rid of the maintenance facility itself and make that whole area, except for the golf maintenance, so the right side of that maintenance lot, relocate out, relocate them out to the chipping yard, you're probably looking about four hundred thousand. And that's to, now, if the maintenance facility stays, you're looking about a much smaller building in the future out there, just big enough to house some equipment to make it easier to service, more efficient to service, you know, Lake Ridge and things like that. You know, at that point, you're talking probably building a metal prefab that's a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I don't recommend ten C one at all, ever. Ten C two, I think is something to contemplate down the road, but we're interested to see how the parking's gonna work once the additional pickleball courts are installed. How tight does that get? And I think that may dictate maybe the urgency of where we go at that point.
Next year's consideration.
I think so, possibly, yes.
First, ten C.
For ten C two?
C two, yeah.
Yes. This one, enhance capital budget process, just needs some, is it like more meetings or what are we looking for there?
So I think that, at least from my perspective on this one, well, sorry, trying to get logged in. So what I would like to see us do is have, have a capital, like, capital budget section within our budget that we evaluate every year and approve yearly, like, obviously we'd only be voting on next year's budget officially, but it would be good to know what's coming down the line for the next five years out.
Okay.
So that we can, like, plan for some of these things that we need and they're, you know, they're on the list, they're, we are identifying funding sources for them and we're putting together that plan, like, so it's like, I don't want to say it's set in stone, but it's like a set plan and when, then we just update it each year and then vote on it, so-
Got it. Not a problem.
You know, pay, if it's pay as you go, that might be a category, might be financing is a different category based on the funding source. But I think that we, we could really have a really good capital budget.
Right. Okay, I'm following you there. We can, we can definitely work to that end. Lookout Park Drainage, I'm gonna go ahead and turn green mainly for two reasons. One, we're corerating in February and then again in June. Basically, you've got red clay out there with grass growing on top of it, giving the water a place to go, that surface water a place to drain. French drains are gonna be overkill, but if needed, we could do that late in the summer. With where we're at with Catawba Park at this point, you've got this spring, next fall, next spring, and then we're probably, I would say there's a ninety-five percent chance we're not using lookout as a athletic facility. It's gonna be more of an open space area for the neighborhood, you know, things like that. We want to go through the coreration process first before we start trenching and installing French drains. And this is, this recommendation's coming from Chuck Smith, the Golf Superintendent. So we had him look at it, give us some ideas, and he said that this is the route he would, he would prefer to jump on it. So that is in process. I will continue to monitor that. The Stonecrest Boulevard lighting, I think we can turn that one yellow, as discussed at the last council meeting. Once things grow, get taller in the future, I think it'd definitely be a nice enhancement out there through that section, especially the Serenity Point Inn, probably more so than the Ledgestone to one sixty Inn, but Ledgestone down the damn road Inn, most especially, I think would look, would look nice, so.
I would just add to that, again, just as development comes in, you know, if there are any opportunities when-
To get them to do it?
Well, that would be amazing.
That's the questions I ask.
Yeah, they tear up that road.
Yeah, yeah, but just the utility, electric infrastructure, if they're tearing it up, why not take advantage of some of those opportunities there, so?
Most certainly. Almost done, council. Small town events. I talked to Heather briefly about this, like, you know, doing something similar to what Town of Fort Mill did for Martin Luther King Day, you know, doing a day of giving, you know, that type thing where, you know, various city facilities are a drop-off point, you know, we could definitely start looking to do things of that nature. But again, depending on the number of events, scale of them, things like that, you may be talking about additional staff, to be quite honest. Yeah, I would prefer, before we add too much more, let's get the events going at Catawba Park. Yeah, let's do a weekend-long fall festival, you know, with a band Friday night, all-day festival on the, on the multi, on the meadow, and then a band bookend, you know, that type thing. Yeah, maybe, you know, the concerts are running well, you know, doing the five that we're doing.
Five, right?
Yep. But what other events we're looking for or that council's looking at? Because we don't have people calling us saying, hey, why don't you do this or do that? I'm imagining y'all have, and that's how this ended up here, so.
What, what we had envisioned when we had discussed this, I guess it was two years ago now, was more of, there seems to be, whether it's perceived or real, kind of a divide first with Peninsula and then New Ortega K, whatever you want to call it. And so the thought was trying to come up with something, whatever that something is, to kind of try to overcome that division a little bit and unify the two sides a little bit more. Now, I don't know what we would do with that, yeah.
I have your answer, it's called Catawba Park.
Yeah, but then, but then the new people are gonna be like, we got all the good stuff over here.
Well, we kind of did that with the new sidewalk out there, and now Catawba Park's gonna take that up too, so I think that's gonna be the, but if we ever do have something like that, we, you know, instead of, like you said, hiring more staff, is we got volunteers that already do that kind of stuff, like the Toys for Tots, we already have a group that organizes that, so we could find a group that wants to do a-
Yeah, Ortega K Forever could help with some of that, those little things too.
Depending on the size, scale and type of event, I mean, yeah, I mean, doing, doing these collection things, stuff like that, yeah, we're not talking about staff. If we're talking about doing some kind of water war down the Catawba River, yeah, or some peppered, eaten chili peppered thing, like, we may need some, some people. Speaking of T K K Forever and volunteers, I'm gonna go ahead and throw this plug in. We have three people coming off the committee and we've only got one application renewing out of the four, so three are not coming back. I don't know how the rest of the applications look, but if you're watching along at home, listening to this tomorrow online, get your applications in, we need volunteers.
We're gonna discuss that in detail at the regular council meeting.
Good, good, good.
Just to add on this, going back to small town feel events, definitely, I think we saw it more of like a volunteer type community thing. One thing that we had talked about, you guys have probably seen this done in other cities where you have like a, like some sort of dinner, like, and you close down the street, right, for a couple hours and you might have entertainment or something like that and people pay. So like, we're just trying to come up with some creative ways to help enhance that small town feel community that's mentioned in the comp plan, you know, and that's one of the main focus areas within that. So that, that's what that was. But not to say that, that we're not already doing amazing things because we are, I think it was just more of like to enhance and then, you know, to Heather's point, trying to find opportunities to bridge any gaps and create just opportunities for more connections.
Okay. We can, we can start putting our heads together, see what we come up with. Evaluation of tennis facilities and association needs, doesn't cost any money to talk, so turn that one green. Yeah, it doesn't cost anything to talk about and evaluate. Skate park, I think based on the conversations that have been had, maybe that's a yellow? It's not a no, it's not a, it's just not right now? Is that accurate, council?
It's a show me the money.
It's not a no, I mean, I'm not hearing anybody that's against a skate park, it's just a not right now type thing?
Well, I think you're, you're gonna look into opportunities at Catawba, Catawba Park. So are there opportunities to add, like, even just features or will we be allowing skaters to, you know, utilize park facilities, trails, things like that? So I think that could be like an, you know, a medium, so, you know, maybe once you have an opportunity to look into that and get back to us.
Got it, got it. Not a problem, understand the direction there. Counsel, that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Great, let's go to item three, council comments. So we're gonna be doing this next week anyway, so is there anything that you want to say about this process that we did today? Start with Ryan. Pass on Ryan, Alicia?
I think this was really helpful, so thanks, thanks, council.
I just want to say thanks to staff for putting in the long hours tonight, I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
I'm real quick, Liz, Madison, Matt, thank you very much. I know you put a lot of time into what you did and I think Charlie probably summed up most of our thoughts. It's not a, not a no, it's just Catawba Park has to come first. I mean, it's been going on for years and years, but thank you very much for spending the amount of time that you've spent and, you know, don't give up. I got something I really want to say, but I'm just gonna be discreet and keep my mouth shut for once. Obviously, I'm a little perturbed about something, yeah.
No, thanks for everything. Liz and I got to do a walk around the park the other day, discuss this, it was very helpful to get me to understand everything and, like I said, if we had fifteen million dollars, we wouldn't have any problems, but where's the money coming from? It's always the, always the, it's like, it's like you are in your, in your own household. You've got a certain amount of income, you gotta figure out where to spend it. And sometimes the new car doesn't fit into, or a vacation doesn't fit into something, but we'll, we'll figure it out sooner or later, we'll get it right. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. And a vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, it's unanimous, it always is. Thank you very much for coming.